Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday night, July 27, 2015 at 7:02 PM. We have a different kind of format this evening. I thought I'd tell you a little bit about how we'll be running the meeting this evening, so that you know what to anticipate.
Is it possible for you to speak up a little bit, please?
Yes, I will, try to, sure. And there are chairs in the front seat, too, if people want to come up to these seats. We have two committee meetings tonight, the first of which is the City and Safety Services Committee. And I know that many of you are here to talk with us and to offer comments about the pool and the design for this. So that's specifically why we have put that committee meeting first with the pool agenda item first. Immediately after that discussion, we'll have a Finance and Personnel Committee, and then we will have what's called a special session where we will be reading several ordinances. So it's a little bit different from our regular sessions where we read ordinances, or sometimes we ask for comments, or if anybody has an agenda item that they would like to bring up that's not on the agenda. So there isn't a spot for that in the Communications section for the general public tonight, other than at our Committee Meeting section when we'll discuss the pool. So what we'll do with that discussion in the committee, the chairperson, Councilmember Steve Patterson, will be presiding during that meeting. We'll have updates from our Rec Advisory Chairperson, Rick Abel, also from Auditor Peck, and if any other salient information from the administration. We then usually turn to council members to see if they have any comments or want to ask additional questions, and then we open it up to the audience. The audience can come up and make comments. We do have a three-minute limit on that, the purpose for that being just such on occasions such as tonight, when there are a number of people who want to speak, we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity. And if we sift through all of the three minutes and somebody wants to come back after everybody's spoken and make one more additional comment or ask additional questions, they can do so. So during that meeting, when our chairperson, Patterson's presiding, council members and administration turn to him to ask to be recognized, so we'll be turning that meeting over at this point to Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President. As was explained, we will, our first agenda item tonight is the pool. And just so everyone's clear on things as they stand right now, with, when we do go into special session, there is no ordinance that's going to be brought forward for first reading when it comes to design engineering or anything else of that nature with the pool. But everyone's, I'm sure, has been reading in the print and has attended the numerous meetings that Branstadter and Carroll has put forward in exploring concept designs, having two town hall meetings if my memory serves me well, as well as small group engagement, working with a number of stakeholders and getting ideas, the wish lists and things as they move forward. So I think tonight we're going to start with either Rich Campitelli, Director of Arts, Parks and Rec, or Rick Abel, who is the chair for the Arts, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Just so that it's clear to everybody, the motion that the Arts, Parks and Recreation Board did, it says that we recommended the administration and City Council to proceed with design engineering of the outdoor city swimming pool. The board recommends a $7.3 million budget. Once construction is completed and a bond is secured, the capital cost of the new swimming pool would expend 58% of the estimated revenue. The revenue estimate will be provided by Kathy at Athens City Auditor. In looking at why we made that particular recommendation, we, of course, went through the consultant's report in all those meetings and looked at it. But we also went back to what was the recommendation that we originally made to council a year ago, May, I think, that started the whole process of this. And we looked at that and we saw that we had things in there, a different timeline than City Council wound up with, with the ordinance that was passed, and there was a recommendation in there that was not put in the other one, because we put in sort of a catch-all, other departmental projects that, as provided by ordinance of City Council. That was not included within the ordinance. In fact, I made, some of you may remember, a plea to put it back in at a council meeting, and I think Jennifer added the words of land acquisition, or project. Land acquisition, I think, was what was put in there. So then, we looked at a couple of different things. One was, which was on the ballot, and really that ballot language was the same as what your ordinance is, to all intents and purposes, because it starts out painting in all the expenses associated with the construction of a swimming pool, accessibility to all playgrounds, trails and facilities, property acquisition, equipment and furnishing, and maintenance, operation and staffing of existing and new arts parks and recreation facilities and grounds. And that was what was on the ballot that everybody got. Since then, I've also looked up the flyer that was sent out by the committee that was put together, Friends of Arts, Parks and Recreation, and it says, "Construction of a new swimming pool. Current pool is over 40 years old." Looked at my old letter to the editor that I wrote in support, and it, again, just restates the swimming pool and the fact that it was, "We can start design plans to replace our 40-year-old pool and complete the project with amenities the community can support." And so we went through all of that, and that's where we decided, you know, we don't know if the pool will last for another summer, so if we can get this going as quickly as possible is good, because we aren't even starting to collect the tax yet. You'll have to borrow the money to do the design engineering in anticipation of the monies that will be coming in through the tax. So, and with the design engineering, and I think that was a little, and the estimate that was done by the consultants when we picked the $7.3 million option, let's see, yeah, engineering and design is $505,600, was what the estimate was. So that gives you a figure to start with. And really, you know, we had a lively discussion at the board about what, you know, how to position it and a lot of other things, but we remember that, we remember, we have to give the final designer some degree of guidance as to the budget. And I had done projections and met with the auditor prior to the advisory board meeting, and we'd come to a 2% growth in the city income tax and where to start. What I did, in our estimates that we made, which are slightly different from what the bond council has done, you've got more tax, more cost for interest than what I had, I think. I just used a 40-year, or a 20-year mortgage, because those calculators are really available, so it's easy to do, rather than go through all the projections that may be of a bond But we did that, and as I said, we were shooting somewhere in the upper 50s percent of the total money coming in, and then with the balance of it, we, in essence, roughly budgeted for now 35% for the first 10 years of the taxes coming in to be spent on all of these other items that are mentioned with the ordinance and the ballot language, and 40% the last 10 years. And that leaves anywhere between $600,000 and $1.6 million, depending upon who's making the revenue projections at that day and what the costs are. And of course, there is final design engineering, so it means that that's where all of the decisions of what's in the product would be placed. Questions?
Any questions for council?
I guess my first question is, what happens with the proposed indoor facility that our citizens have been sort of led to believe was going to happen, sort of in tandem with or following the construction of an outdoor pool? And I understand certainly the urgency of needing to replace our current facility, because I go there with my kids and I see, you know, fiberglass flaking off and pieces of metal in the bottom of the pool that shouldn't be there. But I'm also very concerned about the fact that we're not going to get a chance to revisit this major construction project for another 20 years, perhaps? And it's my understanding that at this point, we've led the citizens to believe that they would be getting both an indoor and outdoor facility, and is that still seen as a possibility by the Arts, Parks and Rec Board?
I think our opinion is that you have to go back to the voters and ask them for it, because you asked them, and everything we put out, and all of our, when we started three years ago with, to develop the city strategic plan for Arts, Parks and Recreation, and we did survey work, we had public meetings, all of that, we, like always said, we wanted to replace the existing pool. The language council put on, the ballot and the ones we, and the one we recommended was to replace a swimming pool. I've talked to the law director, and the law director says, "You have to look at the intent of council." And so I asked the clerk of council to go through the council minutes, and the first mention of an indoor pool was, I think, in the marriage report in January of this year. So it was after the language had been approved by council, it was after it was voted on by the people. And bond council, when we met with them last summer, I think it was, because we asked them if we could use any of the leftover proceeds from the current levy that's on the ballot for design engineering or anything in this pool. The language of your ordinance says for a community center, it can only be spent on the community center. And so it's going to be a replacement fund for the roof and air conditioning and all those other kinds of things. So you have to check with your bond council and your law director, too, to see what, if you really want to do that and then put it on the ballot, I think. That's our opinion, but the legal gods should speak.
Thank you.
Madam President.
I do have two questions, and one of which Councilmember Cochrane raised last week, and that was for the budget for the other improvements to the park. Not that the full detail of that would be necessary before the design and engineering. We do have approximations, but I don't think we have the budget detail for the lists of improvements. So improvements to the armory are $2 to $3 million, but we don't have the details on that. Improvements to the parks, land acquisitions are lump sums. So I'm wondering if there might have been any further discussion or any budget detail available.
Well, the budget detail of that is, that's our next task that we talk, you know, is because now we're going to have to start going in, and once you have the idea what the pool's going to cost, how else? I mean, it's going to be tough to recommend or determine some of those costs. We just, the university on their portion of the bike path just spent, what, $300,000? I don't know totally their scope of work. But I do know that the rest of the bike path, I mean, they, the university owns it down to about Opelousas Hospital, I believe, from Stimson Avenue. The city owns everything else within the city limits. And the bridge across to Armored Ridge also was, I think, is in there. I know the first section of that, Stimson to the wastewater treatment plant, was built by Mayor Beckett, and that's 28 years ago, when he left office in '87. So, yeah, we've done some repairs to it, but it's probably going to need a major, you know, we're going to have to ask Andy Stone to run some of his magic, look at the engineering of those. But we have to give an assessment, as Rich is already doing, of all of the playground equipment that's in each one of the parks, what could be, you know, be placed. We're going to have to get some idea of trails, because we, over the years, the city has purchased significant amounts of property with, behind Karat, the Hawks Woods, the Hope Drive property probably purchased, I would say, in excess of 200 acres, and we really haven't done anything with it to date. Plus, we have the new parks on the south side, the Guandis that donated, and then there's the...
Dowling.
Dowling. Dowling. That was a purchase and everything, but all of those need some degree of work. And so that's really the next task for the advisory board, is to go in and start doing the detail. What I tried to do was rough out, you know, 35%, as I said earlier, and then 40% the last 10 years, gives us a dollar figure that we have for budgeting purposes. I think one of the priorities that, you know, we kind of look at has been, is to be debated again, is Arts West bathroom facilities are pretty small and outdated, and there's only one accessible, and it's, you know, male and female, it's one person at a time. But those are things that we need to look at, and that's why I roughed out and did somewhat of a rough budget in total, once now we can start meeting on those others.
Any other comments?
I would prefer with Rick. I know there's not a set budget for the remaining money, but if you remember at council, there's a litany of repairs for the various restrooms in all the different parks. Accessibility was in some of the parks, Highland in particular, which is pretty elevated. The, of course, playground equipment to Highland. I think concession stand and shelters, better shelters out there. There's, and again, their task right now is to concentrate on the pool. You know, we have other areas we could certainly improve the dog parks as well. But there's, and I always forget how much real estate we have in terms of the bike path, which is quite a bit. So there are going to be needs out there, just to spend it all on just the pool, will pretty much meet everything else's fall's part, unless you wish to approach another ballot on it, another levy on it. And realize we sunset the other one just because we were trying to be frugal about it.
What about...
Thank you, thank you. From Eric, I have a question.
Couldn't go in.
Perhaps you or Rich will go answer this and maybe help remind us with some of the estimates from Branstadter and Carroll, there's suggestions on losses that we might endure with operating costs for an indoor facility. I think if I recall correctly, it was in excess of over $100,000, and that's on a yearly basis. Is that correct, is your memory?
I think it's low. I think it would be more.
More, or in excess of that?
They had $120, and actually, Andrew, Chickie runs the pool, and we ran some numbers to the auditor's office, what we pay now. Sorry.
Thank you, Director.
We, thank you. We ran some numbers, so it is considerably higher, which we suspected. Not only that, with running a year-round pool and having swim lessons inside, which we probably would, would probably eliminate the outdoor revenue that was calculated in the outdoor, being successful weather-dependent. So there's a pretty tough battle to do a year-round pool. That's the big sticking point. Branstadter Carroll hire 40-hour-a-week employees, we can only do part-time 20. So when they list eight, we usually have to hire about 24 to mix that in and cover 20 hours here and there, and they're all students, got to work around their schedules. Only so many people in town are certified lifeguards. Again, that's training, we can provide that in-house. Once we train everybody, there is a class for three years we can't fulfill, put revenue back into the program again. So it's a tough, tough way to go, just to have the consultants who do not run pools, got a pretty good idea to tell you're going to lose that amount of money, and then try to figure out how to make that not be a loss. It's daunting task and not good for my job security.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions up and down the dais? I do have a question, and that is that how, I know we've been seeing, we've seen these plans, these concept drawings that come from Branstadter and Carroll, six different options plus naditorium options, what they were proposing, or at least throwing out there for everyone to look at. And I know this conversation has taken place in that there are other alternatives out there. Do we need to have a 2,000-square-foot splash pad at the community center itself, as opposed to some options of maybe reallocating and reducing some cost by maybe putting them, one at the south side park, or maybe down at West Union or West State Street Park? Is there, I guess what I'm asking, is there room to explore some other possible options as we move forward, and that is the design engineering, is that it, as things roll forward? Or can we continue to explore some other options for the city of Athens when it comes to, at least our aquatics?
I think you can. I mean, design engineering is usually, that's, that's when the designers are going to be asking the city and the administration and everything and saying, "Okay, all right, you want to fence this? Do you want to use, like you have on the outside of the community center, an iron black fence, or you want to do chain link like you currently got around the pool?" There's a significant cost difference. One of the things when we talked about the number two there, when, as a board, or advisory board, is we talked about, we didn't really totally 100% like it, because we wanted to keep the in-front parking lot. We didn't want the fence to go around the shelter house, because we wanted that open to all of the public, not, you know, having an access point problem all the months of the year that the pool is closed. And so we looked at the shore, and we looked at, it looked like there's an awful lot of concrete in that thing, and would like to see that cut down significantly. And maybe that was where we talked about the possibility, that where we could get some savings to do a South or a West State Street. Funny, if the legal folks are going to just remember that as playground equipment in those parks. I mean, it's just a definition and how do you interpret it? But, you know, to give some of the numbers that we were working with, and Kathy will be up here, and probably showing slightly different, but we estimated $17.9 million over 20 years to be the operating cost. Of that, $6.8 million would be spent on other non-pool things, and $9.2 million would be spent on the pool, and that left us with about $1,009,000. That would be, that was, and I thought that was appropriate from my budgeting experience there, because that's about 10% of what we're raising, the 17 million. And from a budgeting standpoint, that's at least gives you a little leeway, and everything is what it said, was a 2% growth rate. The city's had slightly better than that the last 10 years, but again, past performance is no guarantee of the future. But the university right now is doing all the other construction projects, and that's impacted our income tax. But then the state's passed some laws that have a negative impact on it, too.
And at 9.2, is with interest on the bond?
Oh, yeah. About 7.3 grew to 9.2 because of interest on the bonds, plus I put $150,000 in outside of the 20-year note, or bond, for during construction time interest, and probably some, don't know if I have enough in there for bond council costs or not. So that's where I think we're going to get into some thematic differences between what I was roughing out and talking about as an advisory board and what the real figures will be as the city auditor has to certify.
Rich Campitelli.
I wanted to address Jennifer's, her counsel, and Jennifer Cochrane's question. In 2005, we had a large meeting about indoor aquatics. Waterworks came to town, showed us a couple models that would add it to the rear of the community center. They also showed us some pictures how we could redo the current tank that we have. Those cost estimates, plus design, was probably about under $6 million. So going into this, it's been an ongoing thing, we could use some indoor water. 2009, I tried to form another aquatics committee. We had one meeting with probably 30 people in the community center, and I don't believe we had another one after that because there was not enough interest, and the economy was not that great to be asking people for money to build another pool or indoor attached. We went through the comprehensive plan, we come to, number one thing is replace water. Indoor, outdoor, that was brought up, you know, therapy for seniors, lap lanes that we can swim year-round, grid ourselves, go on to the aquatic center across campus there. Again, Parks and Rec, and I'm sure the city would like to have both, we all would like to have both. However, it just gets boils down to operational cost. And that's why we went to Branstadter Carroll, they've done their surveys, you know, our surveys, their surveys, pulled everybody. We can't get everybody up in here in an evening, but all that information has been compiled, and that's where we're standing right now, how to move forward. And that cost, though, where I thought we could get by with $8 million, $8 million doesn't get you much. 7.3 only gets us one body of water. There can be other things we can look at, other companies, if we go out with an RFQ, may have proposals of different projects they've done. But Branstadter Carroll pursued us last December, came and spoke to us, told us the do's and don'ts, how we should go about doing this, and we kind of followed up to a key, and they've actually told us we'd be sitting here today, having this conversation. That's to bring everybody up to speed.
Thank you. Steve.
Thank you. I have a question that's either for the Rec Advisory Board and/or the executive branch, and that is to comment perhaps on the benefit of pursuing a site review. I know we're not making any formal decisions tonight, we're not voting on anything, but how soon do you think we need to begin looking at also the space to do the formalities?
You say space, what do you mean?
The, the pool space, wherever we would finish with the location, that we need to do engineering of it and specking that out with site reviews?
I'm assuming that the assumption that's been taken out there is that if we're doing an outdoor pool or a pool, it'd be in the same footprint as the present pool. First of all, it's elevated, second of all, it doesn't need any earthwork as much. If you attended the meetings, if you remember, that almost everything we'd be trying to put in place as an indoor pool, and the various six locations they determined would require a certain amount of fill, as well as time to let that fill settle, so it'd be stable. I mean, there's ways to do it quickly. I've seen, you know, the university where they throw three feet dirt on top and then take the three feet off when they, when everything settles properly, but again, the assumption at this point would be it'd be the same footprint as the present pool. Configuration-wise, locker room size, that's all to be determined in engineering and design. And again, you know, nothing's going to happen in August, obviously, with the recess of council. It'd be nice to get this started. We're already behind our timeline that was objected in terms of replacing the pool. The concept originally, I think, was trying to do in the winter, which I thought was interesting, because I didn't think they could do that, but as professionals, I guess they said they can. At this point, we're talking about doing it either next fall, 2016 fall, or summertime, depends if the pool gets refilled properly. Again, 40 years is a long time for a pool. And, you know, you have to look at the money at this point, we don't have it. The other thing you could do is, of course, is put it on a ballot. Of course, the timeline for a November ballot is coming straight at you in August at this point. So you could actually say, "Let's have an indoor pool ballot and see how everybody feels about that." Knowing full well that can, we have issues of local government funds. I'm a little bit leery about how we've had this worded with the idea that we're going to actually fund operations for 20 years with a pool, with a pool levy like this. I would, like the community center, I'd rather see an operational portion of a levy, you know, the .05 income tax, that covers the operation of the community center. That way, at least you know you have a funding stream at that point for perpetuity. And again, my disclaimer, of course, is I've probably been in the pool about six times, and I don't have any kids who play there. If you look at the demographics, realize when Branstadter Carroll looked at it, and of Athens, there's a big ballast of 20 years old, and almost... of the Athens, there's a big ballast of 20 years old, and almost, almost immediately they excluded that number. So if you would have pulled out that profile and said, let's take out the 20-year-olds because we all know those are high university students, what does that profile look like? And you still have a large community of, you know, five to 14-year-olds. And that's really what I thought we were aiming at at this point, because that's, again, I don't go to the pool, but I have, you know, I go to that area enough, and I look over there, and all I see is a bunch of young kids splashing. So maybe I come at the wrong time, but that's another thing. I guess that'd be a 24-hour watch. Maybe we'll get a video cam, we can watch everybody for 24 hours and hit a little counter on age groups. But again, the time clock is ticking at this point on this, this action.
There's a lot of things that have to be done. For example, the site has to be surveyed. You're going to have elevations to be able to give to the state building department and, you know, make sure you're fitting the FEMA guidelines that are there because you're talking about building a pool within the 100-year floodplain at that point. So you have to get approvals there. You also have to get state health department approvals on the building and of the pool. Make sure that the process of filtrations and everything else is specked out properly. So you can't just design a pool in a month or two. It's going to take a while, and that's one of the questions that I'm sure, sure, safety director and mayor will be asking, that people that are, I think in the process are doing a request for qualifications right now, as I recall from what you said.
I was waiting to hear, you know, some of this this evening, and then Rich and I were going to tighten it up and ship it out. So even that's a process. We're going to allow, you know, three weeks and allow those proposals to come, and there's a whole review process from there, and then the selection. But we won't be able to enter into a contract with a design engineer unless council proceeds with authorizing that expenditure.
I just wanted to add that, you know, you spoke about the intent of council in the origination of the, the language and the ordinance, and it's my understanding that the intent of council was not simply to fund a replacement pool, but the intent of council was to provide for the needs of arts, parks, and recreation, and to provide for the needs of the community. And I believe that what the community voted for when they voted to fund this bond was a year-round facility. Maybe some are not concerned about a year-round facility, but I know that overwhelmingly, most of the people that I have spoken to, that's a major priority for them. And I understand financial constraints, and I understand that we're never going to be able to please everyone with our pool design, but this is a major concern for me, and I'm hesitant to move forward if we're not able to, if, if what we're simply doing is replacing what we've, what we've got right now. I know there are many in the community who enjoy what we have already and appreciate, you know, and, and another concern that I have with the work that Branstad and Noel has proposed is their critique that we have too much open water, when, you know, I, I'm a pretty frequent user of the pool, and I see that open water being used a great deal. And so I'm, I'm concerned about losing open water to some of the more shallow, and it's not often that I find myself agreeing with comments made in the Athens Voice section of the Athens News, but today there are a few good, relevant comments that echo my concern about some of that loss, which would definitely impact some of the biggest users of the pool. And one of the lifeguards who attended our last public meeting spoke to that aspect that, yeah, you know, we do need the shallow parts for the little kids, and we need it for accessibility, but we also need some deeper water for people to play in and swim in that's not in the lap lanes. So, you know, I, I guess I have some concerns on both fronts. We all have some, some concerns. At the end of the day, we're going to get something that's better than what we have. I know that, and I appreciate the work that everybody's doing on, on the project. I just want to share my concerns as a, as a parent and, and as someone who helped to get this on the ballot.
Madam President.
I might clarify in looking at the ordinance, and Rick, I do have also the, the vote for issue eight material that we had, and it did refer to construction of a new swimming pool. The current pool, pool is over 40 years old. The ordinance that was passed, I just might note, doesn't call for replacement of a swimming pool, it calls for construction. So, and I know we do need to be careful, and bond council has instructed us, as has the law director, that we need to be very careful, too, about what our intent was. So I know that was much of the rationale behind the, the committee, that the, there was, that there is a sense of urgency to replace the current outdoor pool, but can that involve construction of a pool that might involve more of a use throughout the year as opposed to just a few months?
I didn't hear any questions in either one of the statements.
No.
No, and I guess I don't have a question. I, I would like to thank the Recreation Advisory Committee because I know you all have worked for years looking at this and developing a long-term plan and looking at things systematically. So we do very much respect those recommendations.
It's time to have the discussion, and council will make the decision.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We also have utter Kathy Heck to give us at least some, shed some light on the financials behind this project and behind the levy in and of itself.
Thank you. I'm not sure I can add a whole lot. Rick and Rich have both done a good job explaining our process here. I will reiterate what he said, our, our money coming in for the community center has to be spent for the community center. I'll remind everybody that the community center and the recreation department are two separate funds. It was very clear in that original ordinance 20 years ago that that was for construction, furnishing, and equipment for the community center. And yes, I did consult our legal bond council, and we cannot use that for anything having to do with the recreation run side of our operations. So, so we do have to keep that in mind, and as Rick already told you, that we, we can't use that money for, for the design and engineering of an outdoor pool because that is under the umbrella of the recreation department. One thing that we were really kind of struggling with, we also have a bond consultant through Baird, and that's who will help us facilitate our bond acquisition. And doing projections, I tend to go along with Rick Abel's projections. He did an excellent job 20 years ago in projecting what we would need, and we have a surplus in what we've collected for our current community center. It's hard to know, you know, 16, 20 years down the line, how those tax revenues are going to come in. He did an excellent job on that. And so he's done projections for this one. However, our bond consultant did his own projections, and Rick and I have gone back and forth about why the difference is. And I've looked at it some more. He was basing his, his numbers on both pools, which is when he told me that we can't afford both pools. So whether we think we can or not, if they don't think we can, they're not going to help us get a bond. So that's kind of the bottom line for me. However, I did realize that in, in the Branstad and Carroll, and you've already talked about this, about the, the cost of staffing, maintaining, operations of a pool, they're already built into our, our budget for the outdoor pool. We've been paying all those costs, you know, for years, and, but they are not for the indoor pool. So this $120,000 or whatever we end up thinking it might be will be an additional cost and is not, you know, built in. So anyway, those are just some of the comments I wanted to put out there, and I don't know if you have any other questions for me, but we have, have good projections, and I do feel that we need to be slightly cautious because of the income tax changes that are coming down from the state. However, we were conservative in our estimations, I believe. We have a pretty steady tax base here because of the university, and where I am on that. So, you know, if we did try to do both pools, it would be the minimum on both pools. So that's another question you have to decide. The language in the ordinance that was just passed is a little bit broader and overlaps a bit, I believe, between recreation and community center funds, which is how it's written, and it's something we can certainly deal with, with the monies, but that's the only other thing I have to say, yeah.
Member Reisner.
My question is, Campanelli and former mayor Abel was saying that the design and engineering would be above $505,000, some odd dollars and cents, and we don't have that.
Right.
You'll have to go.
Does that include both pools, or is that just for the, that's just for the outdoor pool?
Right. Okay. So our levy is not collecting anything at the moment. It doesn't kick in until next year, is that correct?
Right. What we're collecting now is still only for the community.
And that can only be spent for the community center.
Yes.
So I can't go and borrow $500,000 from the community center to pay for the design and engineering. I can't take it out of a fund line from there.
We can't just take it out of there. I could look at whether we could borrow that. Of course, that would pretty much wipe out that surplus if there's any additional things that need to be done for the community center with that leftover money, which has been discussed the last few years, once we knew we were going to have this surplus. I could look into that. Typically, when we have borrowed money for one fund, it's come out of the general fund, those general obligation dollars. So I'm not sure that we can do that.
So what is the alternative to, to raise $505,000?
Just to borrow a short-term, term, make a short-term loan, borrow.
From who?
Well, probably our local bank, which has already quoted me .35% interest.
Okay.
We really don't get that anywhere else, and so it's not a bad amount. We did that for the wastewater treatment plant, if you recall. I think the amount was $850,000, and.
How will we pay it back? Where would the, where would be the funds coming in to pay back the $505,000?
Well, that, that could come out of the levy money once you get that going.
And how fast will that get going? How soon will we be able to pay off $505,000 from the money generated by the levy?
Well, that's a good question. It depends on how soon you want to start your construction.
Well, no, the engineering.
But the thing is, we get the bond, we'll have that money. Once we do the bond process, then we have all that money in the bank. We can pay it off right then. So within a year, less than a year possibly, I would expect.
But doesn't the bond is also contingent on the design that we pick? Like you said, if we go for both pools, the odds are very good that they'll say, no, you don't get a bond. So even though we have a design study going on.
Well, I would say that I, I think if I put Mike Burns and Rick Abel in the same room, that we might find out that we're going to have a little more revenue than, than he thinks. But I, I still think it would be tight. And I think we could.
A little squeaky tight, or just sort of.
Well, no, I think that the, but see, then that wouldn't include the, although I guess the design and engineering could come out of the leftover from the current bond for the indoor pool, since it's going to be part of the community center.
I, I guess what I'm, I just don't like going out and borrowing $500,000 right, you know, when we really don't have a good fund line coming in to, you know, pay it off right now.
Well, then.
I'd rather wait till we actually had the bond in hand and then appropriate $500,000. You know, if I know I've got $17 million in the bank or in a fund and taking $500,000 out for design and engineering, I feel a lot more comfortable with that, you know, just personally.
Well, that's not my decision to make.
Right.
And I will say that the bond process for this bond as opposed to the bond we just took out for the parking garage will be a longer process. And our bond consultant says a month, but I don't see it happening in less than two months, which isn't a really long time, but only because we've done it before, although it's been a few years. So it's a lot more involved. We have to deal with Moody's and get our credit rating, you know, justified, and it's, it's a bit of a process, and of course, he will help us through that. But, yeah, that's not going to happen for a few months, even if we start it very soon.
Right. Okay.
So I don't know as far as construction and all the particulars of how much lead time they need for the design and engineering before it can start, and when you want it to start, and, you know, that's not, not up to me, how soon you want that pool replaced.
Service safety director.
Thank you. If I may, Jeff, for example, the auditor mentioned the wastewater treatment plant design engineering that was like $800, $850,000 at that low interest rate. We did not wrap that in to date into the, to the actual debt because that's 4% to 6%.
Way lower than, well, we're thinking four or four and a quarter, we're estimating right now compared to less than 1%.
So we continue to pay on that loan because it's in our best interest rather than wrapping it into the higher interest rate.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I assume that we would be considering that in this same venue, because you're not, we're not getting .35.
Right.
We only get that locally, so.
And when we do that, we take out a note or a loan, and we can pay it back, we can choose our payments from year to year. Once we get a bond, that's an amortization schedule that we are, are stuck with, which is probably the right way to say that, but it's just like the community center, we have the money now there to pay that off, but we can't do that. They continue to collect their interest each year, we make our payment, and that's automatic. So when we borrow locally from the bank and it's not a bond, it's a note that we roll over several years sometimes, we, we can choose, you know, what we have available to pay down on it and whether we want to just pay it off or not.
Madam President.
Can I ask a clarifying question? You said that the bond council says we can't do both pools. And was that based on the six options presented with their costs, or did they have an actual cost limit?
He had, no, he had a $5.3 and a $5.6 million cost estimate for indoor and outdoor pools. And this was based off an early spreadsheet done by Rick Abel. So he took that, I've sent him all the information we have, and he has the, the study, and so, so these are not, you know, any big frills on either one of these pools. And he didn't feel like, the deficit was pretty small, but as I said, I think he's wrapped in the operating, staffing, and maintenance for both pools, which we already have in place for the outdoor pool. So that would not need to be included in that one, just the indoor pool, since that would be a new operation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, auditor. Any other comments from council, or what we've heard tonight? Are there elected official, mayor, or?
The hope was that we'd be moving forward at this time, and we'd have at least starting designing, construction, design engineering at this point. But again, to do that, you'd have to authorize taking a loan out and actually proceeding. Your RFQ is the intermediate step, so we'll go from there.
Now, what I want to do is go ahead, and since we have a lot of people here with us tonight, we will have members of the community who want to come forward. If you do come forward to the podium.
I have one more thing I would like to mention.
Yes.
Again, the other possibility is if you really are enamored with an indoor pool is to put something on the ballot, an additional income tax on the ballot. Council can do that. What's it take, 50 signatures can do that? And if you do it before the deadline sometime, I forget what it is, August, early August, maybe, then you could have that as an, as a bargaining chip or at least discussion point. And again, if it's, if it's really that important to enough people, it'll happen.
Thank you. If anyone would like to tonight come up to the podium, again, just state your name and your address, and then we're, we're going to, since we deal a large number of people here, limit it to three minutes, is usual protocol for council. Mr. Scharinger.
Three minutes to surmise, to, to wrap up a.
You can do it.
10-year conversation is really inadequate. Rush to judgment, just because perception is needed that we need to rush to meet certain deadlines, and then throw money away isn't exactly the wisest of decisions, nor the wisest of pressures. At Branstad and Carroll's final draft, there were two proceeding drafts. I personally upped and forwarded requests for those drafts to be presented in their entirety, and that request stands. The indicator is that by and large, the public has been given the belief that the pool would be replaced, and that an indoor pool was an option. There was never any doubt that it was an option, and the public has believed that it would be an unbiased survey and study. The end result of the FDR is not exactly. The end result of the FDR is not exactly unbiased, and there are some indicators inside that study that it's been coached and- or been coached and kind of coaxed to that final result. Some of the written indicators in the document, apart from separate conversations, and the original preliminary drafts might indicate to a large degree that, and some of the notes taken during those periods of time. It's, one, there are numerous flaws in Branstadter's FDR. It discount the student population. I'm sorry, students are consumers. Students will go for what they want. They're here. The worst that should have happened is they should have been prorated for the months that they're out of town. They're consumers nine months out of the year here, not the zero months. Then they said that they would be just going to the local pool outside their apartment. If they have an option for a chlorine-free environment, if they have an option for a longer lap lane when the city pool or when the university pool is closed, to discount twenty-five percent of your population right offhand is, I'm sorry, that's just about darn right ludicrous. But you can justify it, come up with different rationales, but it doesn't carry the day. It, I've listed numerous, and I went a third of the way through the final draft reports, and then had to skip through the other two-thirds because of the speed with which it is happening. And I've listed in the documents you've received numerous itemizations of where that report is flawed. And when you have flawed data, and interpolated data in the wrong direction, you come up with flawed conclusions. You come up with operational costs that aren't necessarily applicable, because you're taking five, ten, and even thirty-year-old pools to draw your data from, using energy outdated equipment, weighing eight, ten times the energy cost, which increases your operational costs. You have energy inefficient buildings, you're not taking into consideration contemporary times. And so therefore, your data is going to be flawed. And I've listed numerous instances, and I'm only one-third of the way through the document, and there's not enough time between this last, when I found out that council was going to make a decision, to plow through the other two-thirds. By and large, I have just several requests from council. One is presentation of the preliminary drafts. Two is for stall a decision while you're on recess. Three, I do appreciate all the work that has been done. I'm not saying anybody's trying to skin out necessarily. I understand the concerns, but one, if an indoor pool is built, or an outdoor pool is built, the capital cost, the cost of money, the city is throwing away eighty percent of its money basically by the pool not being open eighty percent of the time each year. That hasn't even been incorporated into the considerations. So you do have some extra costs with an indoor pool. They aren't being properly represented in Branstadter and Carroll's report, which probably means that your bond agents are not properly interpreting information as far as cost. If they're getting garbage in, they're going to give you garbage out. Now, that's a crude way of putting it, but I'd really appreciate it if you look at those documents, and we put this in a public discussion, and I'd really appreciate if council developed, commissioned, a private, or a private citizen pool committee to run parallel to some of the work the Director Abel has done, the Advisory Council, or Advisory Board, and Mr. Campatelli, because I have a strong belief that a lot of inaccurate information has been led to this process. And like I say, the public by and large has been led to believe that one thing was possible, extremely possible, and very utilitarian, and it could be extremely energy efficient, and yet, almost from the very, probably before the first public meeting, was actually coaxed into a different direction behind, you know, basically in blackout conditions. There hasn't been a whole lot of release of public information over the past five months, kind of like zip.
Thank you. If you would, before you leave the podium, again, for the record, state your name and your address, please.
I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit elevated on this subject. You're welcome. Todd Sweringer, Guysville, Ohio, 23448 Leighton Road, a mile above the deep well injection site.
Anyone else like this? Yes, sir. Again, when you come up, just state your name and your address.
Let me get my name out so I don't forget. Yes, I addressed the council last week on the same issue. And I was urging the council then, let's take a long view of this. Right now, the whole process is very rushed, let's get this done. We need to sit back and, what are we going to do for twenty years? Can we afford an enclosed pool? Has this been put out to the public? Will they support it? Will they support a levy to do this for twenty years? If they do find, if they do reject it, then we do have to go to just an outdoor pool. But right now, there are too many flaws in this, in this particular approach, uncertainties. So I would like to urge the council not to authorize the engineering studies yet. I also would urge them to not do so, because as I look at the pool, the particular design, at least the one I'm aware of, I'm really looking at a water playground rather than a very serious pool effort. There's a lot of little things in there, shower-type things, and the idea that the five-to-fourteen year olds populate the pool, that's true in the summer, if you look in the summer. I think you'll see some older people above the age five to fourteen in the pool in the wintertime. They do so coming from well works to the university pool. If the pool is located properly over there, you might get the same effect. So I would urge you really to not go ahead and go forward with an engineering study at this time, and let's sit back, we can afford one more year to look down the road twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name, please?
Oh, I'm Peter Hoffen, Penter, I live in Runaway, Columbia Avenue.
Thank you.
I covered this body back when Rick Abel was president of council, and Mayor Barrett was here, then Beckett, then Hendricker. So I sat through these meetings for three years, joined DAP, and then I worked at the OU for ten years. One of the things I did there was I worked on the Ping Center, and I wrote the news release, so it was twenty-three point five million dollars. And they did extensive research around the country, and when they built that, it was one of the top three centers in the country. Why? Because prospective students came down, they wanted to look at Maude, and they wanted to look at the library, which is one of the top hundred research libraries, but they wanted to see that Ping Center, because they would spend a lot of time there. So my emphasis in standing up here for three minutes is to say, make sure you end up with a good product that the voters want. I respect Rick Abel, he'll get the numbers right, I don't know who the construction people are, but get the facility right. You have a lot of swimmers here who really, we want to be in that water every day. I got my lifeguard at fifty-three. I've swum with the Alcatraz swimmers in San Francisco. We have a woman here who's going to the national senior event. And the other thing is, demographically, believe it or not, I ran an Athens marathon in three twelve, fifty pounds and thirty years ago. But at middle age, swimming is the ultimate exercise, and as the demographics change, a lot of baby boomers are going to want to be in that water. You're also going to see, it could be a center for families. In Northern Ohio, I was run over by a car three years ago. Swimming was essential to my recovery, but so was sauna and whirlpools. And I met people in those pools who are octogenarians, who've been swimming all their lives. It's a sport people can start late in life, and if they have an indoor facility, which we now have at OU, but it's not open all the time, it's an opportunity to increase the well-being of Athens citizens. And I would say it could be a center unto itself if the right steps are taken. I don't think you want to end up with an inadequate, you can see there's a lot of dissent as to what should be built with an inadequate facility at this stage of the game, when the community has approved the idea of it. So make the specifics good, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Costello, 24 Northwood Drive, Athens. I'm a swimmer, and I'm very disappointed in the, in the design that has been put in the paper, because it really isn't for swimmers. One of my concerns about that design, too, is that I hear that it's hard to get lifeguards, to get enough lifeguards or whatever. If you have five or six different water holes or whatever, it would seem to me you need to have a guard at every one of them for reliability issues. So in some ways, it would seem to me that would require more guarding. But what I would really like to see is an indoor pool that would be for year-round. School starts very early now, middle of August, and that's the point at which the pool closes, and it doesn't open until Memorial Day. So an outdoor, an exclusively outdoor pool, if that's all that we have, is really only available for a very short time during the year. So I just, I'm really, be very interested in an indoor facility to meet the needs, as people have said, of a broader, a broader portion of the community. And I think that's... Oh, I just wanted to make another comment about, I didn't know about some of the meetings, so I didn't get there. To say that there was a poor turn, because of the poor turnout to meetings about pools and about an indoor pool, indicated there wasn't interest. I think publicity is such an important thing, you know, publicizing these meetings in a variety of ways and heavily, because I miss things, and I missed, I missed a lot of the meetings actually about, that Branstadter had, and certainly didn't, didn't know about a meeting, I guess, a while back about an indoor pool. So I would urge good publicity for, for any meetings, for planning, and for, for community input.
Thank you.
Jackie Wolf, 10725 North Point Drive in Athens. I too am a daily swimmer, and I was at one of the planning meetings, one of the first planning meetings several months ago at the, at the community center, and the clear implication was, I mean, when the, when the designers were up there, they spent as much time talking about an indoor pool as they did the outdoor pool. So the clear impression that everyone in the community has is that we not only, not only was there a planning for an indoor pool, but the expectation was that we were going to be getting an indoor pool. And I know when I voted for the levy, I absolutely thought that it was about an indoor pool, and a lot of other people did, too. I'd like to say, you know, I haven't seen the studies, I've heard people talk about them, but I think that it is very true, that there are a lot of daily swimmers in this town. The Aquatic Center at the University has very limited hours, distressingly so, and I think that you would get such a much wider array of people going to the community center if there was an indoor pool. I don't think the study was adequate, because I don't think that it took the right demographic into consideration. I mean, I've met many, many dozens of people who swim daily at the Aquatic Center, and our, our big complaint is that the hours are so limited. So I think that you're going to be seeing a whole new audience for the community center, a huge one, if you have, of all ages, but especially leaning toward adults, and leaning toward middle age, and leaning toward the elderly who, who exercise in pools. It's a wonderful place to exercise. So I really would like to urge you to, to think more about a year-round pool, for reasons that people have said. It's just so important, such a gift to the community.
Thank you.
Nancy McCray, 10808 New England Rose, Stewart, Ohio. I've been lap swimming for about forty years now, and I just want to urge you to do all you can to consider an indoor pool. I think that it will generate more income than possibly the studies are showing, and my fellow swimmers, some names I've just heard tonight for the first time, really went over all the points, so I won't belabor it, but anything you can do, and I really think it makes Athens more attractive, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Beverly Flanagan, 132 North Lancaster Street, Athens. I just want to add a little bit about the OU pool, because it's been rumored lately that OU plans to build a new pool within five years, and adults and seniors, we were told, adults and seniors could go there. Not only are the hours limited, so is the parking. Metered parking is very hard to get, and someone, even with a retired faculty handtag like myself, would have to walk a good quarter of a mile to a dark green or purple lot, which I must use. This is not feasible in the winter. We need our own indoor pool that is accessible to us and with ample parking, so please do reconsider, even if it takes another year. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly.
I, my children, three children, grew up as swimmers here in Athens. I do appreciate there being an outdoor pool, however, everything that's been stated about us being told that both the indoor and the outdoor would be possibilities, I think needs to come forward, because we definitely were convinced of that at that first meeting that was incredibly well-attended, way more than the thirty that was cited by somebody. But I would like to point out the, the last picture that I saw that was depicted in the newspaper, that had some strange little round thing, and then some, maybe four lanes that looked like they might be fifteen yards long. They didn't give any specifics, so we're not actually certain that those lap lanes would even be twenty-five yards. But I would like to make sure that Athens would like to have children grow up as swimmers. Some of the things that have been proposed would have our children growing up playing in water, but not swimming. And I think even, you know, though we may say we've got an outdated design to the pool we have right now, that pool is conducive to teaching young children how to swim. What it is lacking is, what is it, the zero entry, so it's kind of hard for the kids to get in. Another thing to keep in mind for, for children, and mine are grown, unlike Jennifer's that are still small, but the pool, the OU swimming pool, is wonderful for young children, except it's too deep and it's too cold. And therefore, young children wanting to learn how to swim there really do have to be five, six, seven years older, they're going to drown if they're in on their own. They have swim lessons for the young children, but there's no way that young children can play with water on their own because of the design of that pool. So I, again, as we're saying here, I would like to say yes to an indoor, but I don't think we should not consider the outdoor if there is a possibility to put the two together. However, making little round areas is a complete waste of water space. It's making round areas. Square areas will take up, will give us more water, will give us more place, more room for the children to swim, as well as the adults. So I don't know how to make it fit the budget, but I don't think we should be rushing into anything until we say to this designer, who I don't know, this is what we want, make it work for the price that we can pay. I don't understand why we want designers to tell us how to form our pool. It's got to come from us. And we all know that we can, if we cut down on some of the frills, or we cut down on some of the things that make it look cute, we can make this work for the price that we can pay. Don't forget, we still have Nelsonville, and in Nelsonville's pool, go there and try to swim, just see if you can. You can't swim in that pool. It's, it truly is a playground. You can go and play for a little while, but that grows old, even with young children, who at some point are going to grow past being three years old, and they're going to want to be able to float and use kickboards and actually swim laps, even though they may be smaller laps. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Maria Venencia. My address is 25 Hudson Avenue, Athens. I don't have anything to add to what was said, I just want to, to say that I think the community is looking for something different of what is proposed. And I really think putting all the money that this means for a project that has to last for a long time when it doesn't answer the, the needs of the community is just, it makes no sense to me. So, I really think as some of us has already said, it's better to wait. It's better maybe not to be able to open the pool one year, but has a facility that really fulfills the needs of the community in terms of a recreation water facility. I mean, I am not a swimmer. I just go to the pool because I like to be in the water and play with my kids and I have the same concerns as she has. I mean, my kids are already, they were little, now they are seven, 11, 15, and 17. I mean, I need water. I need bigger space of water. Nelsonville or Nelsonville-like type things just don't, don't fit, we don't fit there, you know? And I understand that there is little kids that needs that type of things, but I think we can work projects better to give those kids something that, I mean, they can enjoy in the water, but to make sure that the older kids has a space for recreation and entertainment and has also space, as she just said, to learn to swim. Because in the water, we want, I mean, we want to use this to, to learn a skill that is for the whole life. I mean, and about indoor and outdoor sincerely, I think there shouldn't be discussion of one or the other. I think, I mean, if the community is saying that we want an year-round facility, we should try to see other options and see if this is physical or not before saying no, you know? I mean, what they say is true. We, we need water year-round. The kids go to swim year-round. The high school has a swim team that doesn't have a space, has to borrow from the, from the Aquatic Center in the university to swim. Older people has used us to exercise. The facility is going to give, I mean, if we administered it right, if we put the, the programs that we need there, maybe that facility won't be a loss for the community. I mean, for sure it will be a, a plus in terms of wellness and fitness. And I just sincerely feel bad thinking that someone is going to approve a project that clearly the community is not supporting. I, I just think we need to step back and think better which is the project that really is, I mean, representing what the community wants and what the community supports by levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members from the community?
I had my saber, yeah, very short. Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead.
Ed Newman from 30 Courier Street. And I don't know if I could tell you anything new so much as what's been already said, but I'm, I'm an advocate for, I guess, well, I know this makes people crazy, you put a lot, a lot of energy and thought and effort into this already, but it seems like the product that we have isn't necessarily, there's losers and winners to a degree here, more than, and it seems like we, we should make a better effort to address more of the concerns. And the inside pool addresses year-round. It's more expensive, so maybe we need some more money or a different way to spend money perhaps, but it seems to me it makes sense to maybe put it back to the voters for some more money to get this thing to happen better instead of be stuck with something that sucks for at least a portion of the community. And I think in the, in the long run, we'd be happier with that since we're talking about a long period of time, 20, 40 years or whatever it's going to be next time. But if you don't do any of that, at least have more lanes at the right length, absolute minimum. Because, I mean, there's a lot of people here, I mean, you know, like I myself, terrestrial use of my body is, is, is about done. And, and the only thing I can do is swim. And swimming is so good, it's just, if, once you get to doing it, it's just the best thing. It's, it's difference between being healthy and maybe dying younger, you know, in a miserable way. So, and that's how good, good swimming can be for people, you know? If you're not just doing it to splash around in the water, it's a really good fitness thing. So, and I think there's more ways we could rally around our pool and get more interest and more use. I mean, the OU pool is, is overbooked a lot. Hell, they close it, they close it for football games. So, like there's seven, seven times or so you can't even go swimming because of football and it has nothing to do with swimming. But it takes over the area, you know? So, I mean, there's all, all kind of, you know, the times are somewhat limited and, and you know, they're overbooking, there's a lot of demand. So, I'm, I'm sure a lot, you know, a lot more of that demand could come over to the pool, including the, the swim team from, perhaps from, from the, from the high school. So, I think there's, there's, there's ways to garner more use and interest in things for the pool besides just splashing around. And I'm not trying to diminish that aspect because, you know, I don't have kids, but I know a lot of people do and they want to do that. But we just would like to, it just seems like we should make it so it works out better for everybody. And maybe we should back up a little bit to try to make that happen. Thank you.
Joan Kornansky, 56 Main Street. I think everybody said everything I wanted to say, so I'm going to wrap it up with one thing perhaps. I went to our planners and Boise Southern Appeals workshop several months ago in Columbus and there was a mayor there with his planner and they were doing a presentation in one of the workshops and just north of Columbus. And he was very excited about all the things they accomplished. And he looked at all of us and he said, "If there's something you want, don't say, 'Oh, we can't do that.' 'Oh, we don't know how to do that.' 'Oh, we don't have the money.' 'Oh, we're not going to do this.'" He said, "Put it on the board and figure out how to do it." And that's how we did everything we did in our city by putting it on the board and figuring out how to do it. So, I guess that's what I'm going to leave you with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Using mailing address because I've done a lot of moving. It's PO Box 444, Athens. And I call Athens the hub of my life because I love Athens. I came out here as an OU student and ever since that time, I have been in and out of Athens. I've been to four different states, two other countries, but I keep returning to Athens. So, that's part of my reason for not having been at the meetings pre, prior, previous to this because I am basically still returning to Athens in many ways. I love Athens and I love the way that things move in some respect in Athens. And I highly, highly want to request, I grew up less than a mile and a half from the Atlantic Ocean, so there's a love in my heart for swimming. And now I'm at a point because of some things that happened while I was overseas that I need non-weight bearing exercise. So, for me, swimming is the solution. I would like to encourage council to seek, "How can we take care of those that physically need the exercise?" It's been voiced already, but to seriously consider the needs of the community. There are those younger than I am and older than I am that need some form of exercise and swimming is tremendous. I like to call it aquatic exercise. So, an indoor facility, I think, would be a tremendous answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here tonight that would like to come up and speak?
My name is Martha Bishop and I live at 30 Courier Street in Athens. And I've been swimming consistently, as many days a week as I can manage, since they opened the Aquatic Center at OU. Now, the old auditorium was a pool that served its purpose. I took lifeguarding lessons there when I was a student in Athens, but when I saw the new facility at OU, at Aquatic Center, I just felt like I was transported to another world. I couldn't get enough of that place. And like I said, so every day, practically every day I can manage, I have swum for, gosh, I don't even know, 35 years maybe that pool's been open. So, as far as the city pool goes, I have always swum at the city pool as well. I enjoy the city pool for being outdoors in the summer and I enjoy the Aquatic Center indoors in the winter. But as many people have stated, the Aquatic Center is not always available when we want to swim. Oftentimes, weekends, holidays, just when you're thinking, "Oh, I've got some extra time and I just had that big Thanksgiving dinner, I need to go swim and stretch out" and the Aquatic Center's closed. So, it would be wonderful if we had a facility in Athens where you could, you know, go year-round. If we're going to only have a outdoor pool, it would be wonderful if we could have a place for people to really swim. I'm the person that was mentioned that's going to the national races in a couple of weeks from now and I would not be swimming the 400 IM in the nationals, except that I could go to the city pool and continue my training while the Aquatic Center was closed. Now, one time I had to do a stress test because my doctor, you know, at my age, they want that. So, they said, "Okay, get on this treadmill and in a few minutes, you'll be tired and we'll get your heart rate." And I was like, "Well, if you want my heart rate up to 130, I'm going to have to run because I swim every day." And they're like, "Oh, no, you'll see." 15 minutes later, they were like, "Okay, you can run now." So, I'm just saying that swimming is really a superior cardiovascular exercise. Triathletes join our swim team at OU and there will be like panting after 10 minutes when all the swimmers are like, "What do you mean? We've got another hour and 20 minutes to go." So, the thing I see about the, the outdoor pool of the city, the design divides the community into separate areas, so we don't have everybody swimming together. We have kids over here and adults over here. I like that the current pool has community. It has everybody's, you know, being able to do their swimming in one place. Now, it's okay with me if we have some things for young children to do, but they're only going to be young children for a couple of years and they're going to be older children that need another place to go. So, I'd like to see more lap lanes, definitely because people are struggling always to get enough lap lanes at the hour I go, which is after work. I think we'd see higher use of the pool if we had more evening hours when adults could actually go. Most of the hours are during the day when adults are at work. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. And good luck.
Hi, I'm Karen Koschagano, 11703 Channing Way Boulevard, The Plains. Just came from the pool, training partner with Martha. She's going, I'm not, I can't. But one question I had, I, I was really excited when they were going to present the designs and I went to that meeting and I went to the first one too when they were asking, Branstadter and whoever, when they were asking everyone for their opinions and everything. And that was a great meeting and, you know, everybody was very excited because it did sound like, you know, possibility of indoor, possibility of outdoor. The design meeting, very disappointed, there weren't very many people there and the designs, they spent most of the time talking about the outdoor pool and then they showed one design for the indoor and that was it. And very disappointment, very disappointed there. My question actually was to them too, "Why are we talking about two separate pools? Is there a way to maybe combine this somehow? Have one pool?" I know, yes, there's people who want to swim outside, but could that pool be mainly indoors and have the splash things for the kids more outside? Something to think about. I just would like you guys to not rush into this, maybe consider some more different designs, et cetera, and maybe poll the community a little bit more. And I'm hoping that we could actually see both an indoor and maybe some outdoor, but I'm much more in favor of the indoor facility. And I, I made friends, a lot of friends from the swimming and they're the ones who actually get me to go places. I, I don't swim that much at the city pool. I swim mainly at the OU pool, it's convenient. But if I find my friends going there, like Martha just talking, I'll, I'll gravitate with them too, especially if we've got good facilities.
Thank you. Sure.
I've been up once before, I had all the meetings, of course, but I just want to remind everybody, with the, the surveys and everything brought to us, those are just concepts. There were no designs that we were putting our fingers into or agreed upon. They kind of wanted to let us know what some things cost and there was a breakdown of those costs. Nothing is set in stone. I keep hearing this again and again, "You didn't like those pictures." Well, I, I don't disagree with them. I wasn't quite wild with them either, but that was their job to show us what you get for your money. I just wanted to clear that up.
Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak to the pool itself?
I would just like to ask that this conversation be carried on. I really would. It's incomplete, it's inaccurate, it's indefinite. Money's a one-shot in a lifetime deal. This is a legacy project that's going to last 40, 50 years. Well, I'll be dead and buried before we build a new pool in Athens. All of us.
Speak for yourself.
We'd like to. This is too fast, it's too soon. I know it's been 10 years in the making and there's belief that something needs to be done.
Buy the microphone.
Yeah.
No, I'm serious. Nobody else knows what's going on. Well, I believe everybody heard me. Yes, here, not in television.
I would like to add that I attended the first meeting to plan for the pool and was told that I would be contacted about subsequent meetings and never was contacted even though I gave my contact information. So, I would like to see more public discussion.
We know because someone did it.
We do have a good president for doing things right and looking down the, the many years down the line. Our community center is an example. We could have built outdoor, basketball courts, an outdoor track and hey, fine, May, May through October, but we didn't. We built a community center that's for all year-round and will last many, many years and everybody can use it. That's, that's how we have to go.
Thank you. If there's nobody else, I do want to report before tonight, before coming here, in a matter of about an hour, I received about 19 emails. And there's two main themes that I received from constituents throughout the city. Number one is, you know, re-engage or re-entertain the idea of a swimming pool possibly, you know, be a little bit more creative with a retractable roof or whatever, some other possible ideas, so it is kind of a true indoor/outdoor. The other thing that I kept hearing as well, probably the vast majority of that 19 were into, constituents were saying that this is going too fast and people feeling that things, this process was running at a things, this process was running at 110 miles an hour. But, again, I want to share that with everyone and be on record as having been true to the constituents who did reach out to me with that. The other thing that came forward, and this is several months ago, was the possibility, again, as I mentioned earlier tonight, of looking at some other creative options such as putting a splash pad in some of our city parks. Let's kind of disperse the wealth to those who may not be able to make it to East State Street Park and have something along those lines as well as a smaller, possibly more cost-effective use of some dollars that some of the, someone was mentioned tonight, are the kitty elements that, you know, serve some, but not all. And, this could possibly be another option as we explore through design engineering as things go forward. So, I just want to wrap up on that note. I'm sure there's a lot more to come on this topic, which is why it won't be moving forward in special session tonight as being introduced. It'll come forward at a later date. Mayor Butler?
I'll add as well that I received some input or suggestions about looking at partnering for an indoor pool, that we ought to consider discussions with the private sector as well as the university and as well as some other entities to help maybe meet the needs of the indoor pool potential. So, that is something that I received as input or feedback from the community, that we shouldn't solely rely on the levy to pay for that space, that there might be other options that we could pursue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Mayor?
Again, to respond to the idea why we ended up with a separate entity as an indoor versus outdoor, again, we're looking at the possibilities. The dollar amounts really limit to what we are seeing here. The idea of trying to get a pool built to replace the aging one, I think is why we moved to head with an outdoor one. Again, my recommendation is between the 19 emails that you got and the people here who are citizens of the city, you can put a petition together and lickety-split and have it on November valid and then put it to the people what they want. If you want a solution, all it takes is your signature and somebody to put it together. And again, I'm not that champion because when you get down to it, I don't use the pool and I don't have kids. And Todd, if you're going to respond, get up to the phone, microphone.
Mr. Swearingen, I'm gonna allow you one minute of time, please, because we do need to move on to other agenda items.
Understood. This idea that if we want an indoor pool, we need to put in a second ballot implies that we will go ahead with an outdoor facility, when the public by and large right now wants an indoor facility from the first ballot. If a second ballot is put forward but it doesn't succeed, the city will go, may go forward with an outdoor pool, consume the revenue and we spend the rest of our lifetimes without adequate facilities. We have no idea what's gonna happen in nine years. We know OU does whatever it's gonna do with an aging facility that's reached the end of its useful life. We have no clue. We're banking on what ifs. We're not planning on what we can do in reality. And we keep representing operational costs on false numbers, the need to speed, and then presenting secondary false scenarios that could easily fail like a secondary ballot in November. The public are fed up of spending money. Their pockets are tight. They've already put forward the idea that we should spend money on something that will fulfill the public need. We don't really put forward double the money in November to again fulfill the promise that was made last year.
The promise wasn't for an indoor pool.
The promise was a pool.
Did you vote on it? Did you vote on it?
Does it really matter?
I guess so.
The people that are paying for this pool that's outside the city limits.
Mr. Swearingen, Mayor Wild, this is a committee meeting?
Well, this is what I want to hear.
No, it is not a debate and that is not to be held here.
It's very contagious when raw information is placed forward.
We need to continue with our committee meeting tonight and the reading of the ordinances. I very much appreciate your coming tonight. We can continue the discussion in another format.
Okay, moving on, the next agenda item that we have this evening is on the armory, water stabilization. As some of you are familiar, the RBC architecture was tasked with looking at what it's gonna take to stabilize the armory. They came forward with their report as to what it's going to take to stabilize the armory and one of the major elements with the armory stabilization is clearly sealing the building envelope. The building envelope needs to be repointed, tuck and pointing the facility. RBC also received two bids, I believe it was, on the armory itself to have this project done. One came in at, in excess of $140,000. The other one came in a little over $82,000 to have the project come forward. Council learned of these bids and the need to move forward because we're about to go into the fall and winter season where we're gonna start having more frost, frosting than thawing and so on and so forth, which is extremely destructive to any brick building, as we've seen throughout the city. Both of the bids came in from companies that have done a number of tuck and pointing projects throughout the city, some for OU. The firm that came in at $82,000 has done, again, several buildings to include Goodfellas Pizza, that building down there on West Union after the fire, to where they've completely rebuilt that, the facade on that building. So, what we'll be bringing forward is an ordinance that will be declaring a real emergency, real and present emergency with having this go forward so that we can get that building replanted and tucked this year before we do start going into the freeze-thaw cycle again, which, as I stated, is only gonna further lead to the potential destruction of that building, which we're desperately trying to save. I should also throw in that there has been other funding mechanisms that have come into play for the building, for building design and looking at marketing with the armory. The Ohio History Connection, Paul Logue, our city planner, has done a great job of being able to secure, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, somewhere around $30, $30-some-odd thousand, $30?
I forget the amount.
It's for looking at what can be done with the armory. We've also received Ohio Brownfield dollars, which came through the Port Authority to look at the scope that the project may require in terms of having things like asbestos removal. I'm sure there's lead-based paint inside the armory, but it'll be a full-on Phase 1 EPA assessment of the armory as well. That said, I'm gonna...
Okay. Again, part of the thing is this was the $7,000, this is actually a result of the $7,000 you spent to look at the stability of the armory. We got a report last week from RBC. They had actually gone out and gotten some bids, which was surprising, but at the same time, it's very commendable that they did that. Although, I think they sat out for a little while. We looked at our accounts. We have in our capital fund, the building, lands of buildings, about $64,000 in the building improvements slot, funding line, and about, I mistakenly put $25,000 in for a van that they actually bought with last year's money. So, we have enough money appropriated in the 580, 112 buildings, lands of buildings funds, capital funds for doing this repair. It sounds like it's worth doing because, one, is that the immediacy of the pointing and the weatherization. Two, is that we have actually two other grants that are coming forward. One thing, as you say, is with the local government contracts and was it $22,000? Correct?
With a match.
Oh, a match. Total match is that, for $12,000 for the grant, a match of $9,000, almost 10 for us. About $22,000 to put it in for a, basically pretty much a study of what the possibilities are. And then, as you say, the EPA grant coming through the Port Authority to do Tier 1 evaluations for, as you say, asbestos, lead-based paint, any type of remediation that might need. So, we have this chain of grants that are coming forward. And again, the desire of council with the initiation of the $7,000 was to start looking at this and see if we can get something on track with it. And, so this is the desire to do that. And you have, I believe, an ordinance in, for first reading tonight.
I do.
And I apologize for the outbursts. I just, I think there's a lot of misinformation going on. I think that we, you know, take your time, whatever you want to do with the pool. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
I have a question.
Sir?
Could you clarify what we mean by repointing the armory? What exactly does that turn?
That means repointing. Repointing is really taking out the mortar in between the bricks, repairing the mortar. Usually you take the loose stuff out, scrape it out, put new in. It'll also require some sealant, waterproof sealant. We did actually some of that on the top, I forget, the Fort Look structures, many years ago, those were coming over. I forget what they call them, crelations or something? I forget the term.
Crelations.
Crelations, okay.
Yes.
I always just think of the pieces of Ford. Those were actually done quite a few years ago. They probably don't require as much maintenance, but at the same time, they're probably more exposed than the rest of the building.
What are they made of? Sandstone?
What, the mortar, just regular concrete, mortar, brick.
Okay.
It's brick. Okay.
All right.
And again, this is, we have some leakage in it. We have some seepage going through the brick, just by definition. There are, you know, we could spend a lot of more money on this. They recommend actually looking at windows next. But again, I think really anything down the line, we have to really have an idea of where we want to go with this, exactly. I mean, I know it's our building.
Right.
We want to see it open to the public eventually to make, you know, be a number of dollars to do that, but until we have a nice focus on where it is, which is the second grant and train, you know, we want to maintain it.
Oh, yeah.
I should add that one of the things that David Moran at RBC did mention, because the question did come up, in terms of historic preservation with repointing and from what he was saying, that this fits with historic preservation in terms of having this repointed, so it's not deviating from building design or anything. It's, again, it's just further protecting the building envelope.
Right.
If anybody goes up to the armory and looks around, especially at the lower level, you'll see that there are some sections where mortar is, you know, you can probably stick your finger in there a good half inch to an inch in between some of them. Don't do it, but you could. It's, this is desperately needed. There is some water seepage in and this should rectify the problem of any water seepage, especially during the foundation level.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a joint police advisory council barbecue. Jennifer, do you want to take that one?
Sure. I guess this will be the second year for this event. Last year was the first year this event was held and it's a joint effort between the city and the university police forces. I believe it was a very successful event last year, effort at community relations to bring folks out and let them be together and enjoying company and food together. You know, we're always hearing things in the media the last few years about police brutality and we're glad that this type of activity doesn't happen in our community. This is one way in which we build strong relationships. This is a good piece of community policing. We need to know our law enforcement officers and they need to know us because we're all in this together. So, this is just a good community relations event and it's tentatively planned for September 30th, 5 to 9 p.m. and that will require the closure of portions of Court Street as well as Park Place, so that that event can take place. And there will also be a ban on parking on that section of Court Street between Mulberry and President Streets to enable the street closure and the event to occur there outside. So, if I'm forgetting anything, you've got it.
We do split the cost from Ohio University, so they've got their money in place and secure the dates.
So, we'll be reading a first ordinance tonight and subsequent ordinances will be read in special sessions, I understand.
Mostly because we really don't have an emergency clause, nor do we have a number of members present to pass an emergency clause. So, I am requesting at least another two special sessions before you disappear from council chambers for a month.
I might add that the, I was in the planning last year of the joint police advisory councils, planning for this event, the barbecue. I guess I had to by default since I'm the chair of that committee, but that aside. This is kind of, this is one of those vitally important events, that this is where we truly get student and community engagement and in particular with our law enforcement agencies, Ohio University's Police Department as well as Athens Police Department. I should also mention that this was really, it was well-received at this year's International Town Gown Association because it was something that essentially, this barbecue kind of spawned a difficult conversations symposium that took place to where this was presented and a lot of our communities thought it was pretty impressive to have something like this to engage all throughout the community, to get to know a police officer by name as opposed to the person behind the badge, a person with a badge behind the steering wheel of a car. So, this is a great event, I believe. Thank you. Miscellaneous, I don't know that we do?
I wanted to mention in passing, and you attended the same meeting, we were approached by NOPEC, which is the Northeast Ohio Energy Council. They're very similar to what we're doing for electro aggregation. In 2009, we did put on a ballot and passed gas aggregation. They approached us with the idea of actually us negotiating with them for gas aggregation, this is supply of gas. We did not pull the trigger on it in 2009. I believe Alahu Ghazni was the spearhead of that at the time, mostly because the energy trends were changing for gas. We had a long discussion with the gentleman from NOPEC about how you can, you know, hedge or not hedge in terms of the market. I just bring it up in passing. I'm not ready to act on it, but I think this conversation has to go further because we have, we did have people approach us about supplying gas at the time. We were very cognizant of the implications of gas, considering the gas shell, gas environment that we live in. So, I just bring it up that there was a conversation and there should be more and council would probably have to be involved in that. Again, it was passed by ballot in 2009. I don't have the exact date, but I'm sure you can look it up, a little homework. And again, this is, nothing is gonna act in immediately, but you have a month to think about it and ask the questions, formulate the questions, right? I don't know if there's anything else you can add to it. I mean, we were both at the same meeting.
No, Mayor, that's pretty much it.
Okay. I just wanted to, you know, throw it out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the Finance and Personnel Committee with Chairperson, Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one item. It's the Public Defender's Agreement. Time to time, we have to authorize an agreement with the Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of attorney services, the Public Defender's Office, and then the dates change and we've done this before. And, Mayor, would you like to speak to it for any, otherwise I'll just read the sections and we'll get out of here.
Well, again, it has to do with, we have this overlap that occurs because they're on a fiscal calendar, we're on a regular one, so we start setting up the time and we always seem to run a little bit skewed. Actually, if I look in the contract, it says we're allowed to do a six-month extension on it, so we could actually run with it, but we need authorization to actually enter the contract for the public defenders. In the past, what has occurred, of course, we look at the $61,000, almost $62,000 and say, "That's a lot of money," but to actually hire somebody to cover the number of cases, it is not. I mean, we're pooling our resources together to cover this between the county, the states involved on some level too, and again, it's just authorization so I get into that contract and pay their, our share for the, again, for these people who can't afford.
Right, right. It's Public Defender, right.
Public Defender, yes.
I watch lawyer shows too on TV, so I've seen them in action.
It's probably more complex than that than a TV, but I'll stick with that, yes.
I don't have anything under miscellaneous unless you want to bring up something, finance personnel for miscellaneous.
I can't think of any miscellaneous. No, good.
The auditor didn't have anything for me either, so...
The only other thing I meant to ask you out of a portion left is that when we talk about the ballot issue in terms of the pool, I assume that will go into a debt fund, but unlike the community center, which is segregated from the recreation, I assume this will be, there probably should be a cost center, and this is something you might want to discuss with it, cost center to segregate the pool money from the rest of recreation, at least at this point in time. And I don't know what that will look like in accounting services. And I don't know what that will look like in accounting services. The other thing is because we are taking a good chunk of the money for lands and buildings in terms of any capital improvements, I may have to approach you later if there's some unknown breakage in terms of other places, because we are, as I say, I asked the director of lands and buildings if there are any, you know, things that need to be done immediately, and can I actually pull that money out? And he said no, but he also, the caveat was, of course, if something comes up, you know.
Right.
I mean, as you know, whether it's birds in the belfry here or something new and different that we have to deal with immediately, but I just want to be aware that we may have to pull that money, and that probably money would have to come out of the unappropriated balance in the general fund, just so you know.
Okay.
I'm not saying it has to, I'm just giving you the heads up. I'm trying.
For a warrant is for armed, I understand.
Okay, that's all I really have to, as a communication.
Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay. We'll move on to special session. The first item of business being established in the quorum, and we have four members present tonight, four council members. So our first item will be ordinances for a third reading, Ordinance 6915, an ordinance authorizing the safety, service safety director to submit an application to the local government innovation program for a grant fund, a feasibility study for a joint facility to house Athens City and Ohio University safety services. And this is introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 69-15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 6915.
Thank you. Again, this is for a feasibility study to look at a joint facility between the City of Athens and Ohio University's police departments, as well as police and fire under the city to move forward, again, just a feasibility study.
Okay. Any additional comments?
Thank you. I just want to express my support for the ordinance. I think it's wise for us to move forward. I'm disappointed that the county backed out, but I think that it's wise for us to move forward. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving ordinance 6915, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes. Ordinances for second reading, 7415, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the 2016 state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement program for issue one funds to execute contracts as required, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 7815, an ordinance adopting the Athens County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for the City of Athens, introduced by Councilmember Patterson. Ordinances for first reading, ordinance 7915, an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for water stabilization repairs to the armory, introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this was, as what was discussed earlier, is to protect the armory in moving forward, knowing full well that we need to act quickly on this before we get into the winter months and having more freezing and thawing taking place and therefore having further building deterioration.
Thank you. Ordinance 8015, an ordinance closing Park Place and a portion of Court Street on Wednesday, September 30th, 2015, with a rain date set for Thursday, October 1st, 2015, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM for a barbecue sponsored by the Joint Police Advisory Council, otherwise known as JPAC, introduced by Councilmember Cochran.
As we discussed a few moments ago in committee, this is, will be the second year for this successful community relations event, and this is based upon a request by Athens City Police Chief Tom Pyle on behalf of the Joint Police Action Council, and will involve simple closure of Park Place and section of Court Street, as well as a ban on parking on Court Street between Mulberry and President Streets. I move to adopt ordinance 8015.
I think we'll be having special sessions. We're just doing the first reading tonight, and then we'll have some special sessions after that.
I got ahead of myself.
That's okay. Let it happen, let us not pass it. Ordinance 8115, is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to extend the agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through December 31st, 2015, and that's introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. As was discussed not more than five minutes ago, the good offices of the mayor, this is an agreement that we have to go into time to time with the county for services with the public defender due to the way our calendars line up. The amount is $61,595.38, and it will go into effect immediately upon passage, which we are going to do tonight.
Okay. We have a resolution for third reading. This is R 0815, and it's a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
I move that we accept R 0815.
Second.
And we discussed this in committee a while ago, and the President of Council gave a very lucid explanation to a very complex thing, which I'm still trying to get my head around. But basically, we will approve this, and we'll go to the county auditor, that we accept their recommendations, their certifications, and I believe, out of that, from our annual budget, the, from what I'm looking here at the figures, Athens Township General Fund should generate $810,702 to the city, Cannon Township, $51,656, all based upon a millage of 2.60. Is that right? More or less?
Yeah, 2.6 for Athens Township and 2.4 for Kane.
2.4, I'm sorry. I'm very near sided with cataracts.
But you're right on the grand total, $862,000 a year approximately, our estimates for 2016. So we have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 815. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. And those are the last of the ordinances for tonight. Do we have?
A special session tomorrow at noon.
Yes, we do. And another special session likely later this week to be announced. The public will receive 24 hours' notice on the announcement of that third public or special session.
And this will just be the repeat of things. We need to get another reading. Some will be, anything on the second reading, of course, will now be on the third and be voted on, the two, right? Nothing extra?
Right. Primarily for the armory and the, and the one other.
Hazards mitigation plan, natural hazards mitigation.
And the multi-jurisdictional.
How do you spell I?
Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Okay. All right, we're ready to adjourn, so entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
You too.
And we have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it is 8:59 PM. Thank you very much.